So we're gonna get ready to start. I mean, please turn your cell phones to the silent position. Thank you so much. And at this point, we will actually bring our meeting to order. Thank you so much. At this time, would you call the robe, Ms. Ray?
The Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Alex Heath.
Present.
The Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
The Honorable Samantha Hudson.
Present.
The Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
Honorable Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
And the Honorable James Whitmore.
Present.
Okay.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
At this time, Dr. Larice Howell, would you please come forward, sir, with implication? If everyone can, please stand.
Thank you for the opportunity to pray before you all, Mayor and City Council. God, the excellency of you is beyond our imagination. However, we blend with your forces of courage that you give us, our mandate of service to your kingdom and to the government, to the city, to our families and all. We pray, Almighty, everlasting God, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, this prayer that you said would not go unnoticed. Therefore, our request, we petition you at this hour to bring the spirit of love and peace throughout this government, that we shall not forget that the election of the people and the community is that there be peace and there be a unity of productivity. Let us not fail to misguide ourselves, our own mind and our mandate, that not only is it to the people, but it's to you as well, God. And we give you the glory, the praise and the honor for this opportunity to stand before this community that seeks to have productivity and be proficient in this community. It is our prayer before you, and we thank you for this opportunity to stand before this government body, the mayor and the city council and the people as a representative of your kingdom to say thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. In Jesus Christ's mighty name, I pray, amen, amen and amen.
Amen. Give us peace in the blood of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
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 There was a council removed the actual presentation of the city attorney. So we're gonna go to the actual next item, the adoption of the city council agenda. There was a council you had before you, the printed agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Motion is made by Ms. Jones and second by Mr. Heath. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, 30 minutes for y'all to be available for public comment. Each speaker shall speak limited to three minutes. However, a speaker may transfer his or her three minutes to another speaker. No speaker shall be permitted to speak for more than six minutes. Further in the event if more than 10 speakers desire to speak, each speaker should be limited to two minutes and no speaker shall speak for more than four. Issues raised at this time will be referred to the city administrator for review. Responses will be provided at a later date. How many speakers do we have?
We have eight speakers.
We have eight speakers, so we're at the three-minute interval. At this point, if you'll go ahead and call our... Ladies and gentlemen, say this too. If we've got a public hearing scheduled on this item, if you're here for the public hearing, could you please hold opposed to speaking at public comment? Can you speak during the public hearing so we can hear your perspective regarding the item? If you're here about the public hearing. So go ahead and speak.
The first speaker is Walter Brown.
Mr. Brown? Yes, sir.
I have been on the council meetings since A.J. Green was the mayor. And I doubt that any of you here, with the exception of Councilman Heath, even remembers A.J. Green. That's quite a while.
Yes, sir.
Fifty-eight something years. We were a small town then. You know, I think when I moved here, we had about thirty-seven people.
Speaking to the mic, sir.
Was the population. And the many council members where the council didn't agree. And the many where they all had different ideas. But you know, that's why there's six of you up there. If everybody had the same ideas, had the same opinions, we wouldn't need but one person. But there is a way to get along. We have, I think, one of the greatest cities around. We've got departments, our Parks Department, our electrical, excuse me, electoral department, our streets department, and without a doubt, and you're gonna know what I'm gonna say next, the best fire department and the best police department. You can put them up against anybody. We've had in some, in the past, in some of the older council meetings, we've had ethics problems, or they thought they were problems. The way they were solved was they went in the back room with the lawyer and the administrator and worked them out. No fanfare, no real blowout. Some of them didn't work out quite well, but they worked out. What I saw the gentleman before me say about the core values, I like those. He said that integrity, compassion and communication, those are very, very important. But what I have seen in the last few months at some of these council meetings is embarrassing. One council meeting that I was not here, but I was watching it on, excuse me, on the internet several months ago. If I had not known different, I thought it would've been my children in the back room arguing with one another. That is embarrassing. And he also, the gentleman spoke before me, was talking about that this came up with some of the staff, better communication with the council members. If you've got an agenda, you know, think about it before the method that you bring that agenda about. There's a way to solve things. You can get along, you can disagree, but you can still get along. Arguing, name-calling is uncalled for. You've got the sign beside you, situated to succeed.
Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go for it. Thank you so much.
Let me just say, if any of you'd like to speak to me after this, I would be more than happy to.
Yes, sir. That's fine. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Lee Walton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish I had the voice and the eloquence of Howell. I do not. But I will try to very briefly make a couple of points on intergovernmental coordination and, of course, the courthouse. I heard, I listened to the strategic plan discussion a minute ago. I've been a participant on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. It's critical that those two dovetail together as we wrap them up. So I hope that as you steer those two ships into port, that they will be directly and closely aligned. And I hope that they will both emphasize intergovernmental coordination. Because in the way that we are situated with our brother and sister cities as they are configured adjacent to us, that's critical. I've spent the past few months working with other Fairburn residents, also South Fulton residents, fighting an industrial rezoning that would be a detriment to Fairburn, honestly, more so than South Fulton. We have ninety-five percent succeeded. There's a meeting tomorrow night that will hopefully finalize that. And then there are critical decisions to be made about the future land use of that property, which is on the border of Fairburn. So I'll be happy to talk to anybody about that afterwards. On the courthouse, we are approaching the third anniversary of the fire. And it does not look much different than it did right after the wonderful fire department put out the fire and saved the building. So I'm here again, along with some other neighbors, to strongly encourage, if we have funds from an insurance settlement for the courthouse, let's plan and use them. If we need more public involvement, by all means, let's get it. But let's continue to keep that at the forefront, take action and have that as a part of our strategy for the city. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Vera Ragland.
The items that I have in mind to address have to do with the quality of life in Fairburn as well as engagement with citizens. I can remember when you opened up the art space downtown. You had that great presentation and exhibit, and since that time, nothing else has been done. I want to suggest, because our schools are in such poor performance, and I do mean that in the most polite way, that we need to get our parents involved. And when you look at the arts, there are so many excited arts teachers in our schools. I know that to be true. I'm thinking that perhaps you could have your elementary, middle and high school art teachers come to a meeting and agree when they will exhibit on grade levels in that strategy for public education. That way, you get an exhibit downtown for each one of those sections. You could put that on the calendar for different times of year. And parents will come out to see their students work. Another thing I want to talk about is what has happened to our city council with the youth. And I understand that the high school students do work jobs, and it's been a conflict, although the city made every effort to give them a stipend so that when they missed their jobs in the evening, they did have money coming in for their allowance. I want to suggest that you step back and look at middle school kids as youth city council members. That way, they get groomed all the way to high school. By the time they get to ninth grade, they may stay with us in spite of the fact that some of them want to work. But if you do that, we will never have this gap that we have now in training our kids in how to be citizens. I thank the code department, too, for the work that they've done on Sir Charles. I also want to add that with the tech, I see you have some suggestions of how to get more money going into tech. In using the form that asks you to upload your pictures, I even had to try to get help with that. It won't upload a file. It will only upload one picture at a time. It only lets you do one. You have to go to another file, upload another picture. Or you have to go to another form, write it all over, upload another picture. So if someone would address that, that would be a great help. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Brandy Wilson.
The Wilson? Okay. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Antavia Benson.
Ms. Benson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I first wanted to kind of piggyback off of what someone, the first gentleman that came up, said. I love my city. I absolutely adore it, and there are so many citizens who do as well. And it breaks our hearts when we see the bickering and the fighting and the posturing that happens. I know that you all are passionate about what you are doing. I know that you all came to serve this community. And we thank you for it and we respect you for it. What we ask is that you respect us by giving your best and your all, putting your emotions aside, putting hard feelings aside, remembering why you came to serve in the first place. So I ask that as you move forward with the strategic plan, with the budget, even with the upcoming election, that you remember your why. Remember why you came into this place. Remember why you sat in those seats. Remember what is important to you as an individual, as a child of God and as a public servant. And so when these moments are tough, when you're ready to scream and throw in the towel and throw chairs and everything else, stop for a moment and remember your why. It's okay to take a breath. It's okay to actually say, I don't know. It's okay to even say, I don't like this. But what's not okay is to call each other outside of your names. What's not okay is to show other cities that we can't do the tough work. We're asking for funds. We're asking to be seen. We're declaring that we are situated to succeed, but we're not acting like it. So be situated to succeed. Only other thing that I wish to discuss is our police force. I used to work at the Centers for Disease Control for fifteen years. It's where I came from right after college, not with a scientific background, with one in the arts. And yet, there was a place for me there, and there was a heart for me there. And for our public servants, for our first responders to come in in the face of danger when someone who had the wrong idea wanted to attack before speaking and before thinking, and for our public servants, for our first responders to go into harm's way so that we don't have to.
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Understood.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Call our next speaker.
The next speaker is Angela Jones.
Ms. Jones?
I am not near as eloquent, so I wrote down what I'm gonna say. Some of you might know my husband, Jason Jones. He's been on the downtown development and the planning and zoning. He's traveling for work, so I'm here on his behalf and several of my neighbors. For nine years, we've lived here in Fairburn, twenty-five feet away from Campbell County Courthouse. The night of the fire, our neighborhood came together. We were the first to alert the fire department, and we helped move vehicles and bring water to the firefighters. We showed up because that building's a symbol of Fairburn. It's on murals. It's used to feature promotions for the town, and it's woven into this town's identity. But three years later, it sits untouched. We've had workshops, discussions and promises, but no progress. Instead, more windows have been boarded up. Sixteen windows are boarded up right now with plywood. The courthouse continues to deteriorate. It's now standing as a symbol of urban blight in the historic downtown Fairburn. The money that we spent talking about what to do could've gone towards just shutters to close up and cover that wood so that it doesn't look so deteriorated. You could've used it just to simply power wash the courthouse. But three years later, it looks worse than the night of the fire. So we're just asking for you to clean up the exterior while you decide what to do with the interior. That road, Cole Street, is used by so many people when ninety-two is backed up from that light. So many people see that courthouse. You might not drive by it, but many people driving through Fairburn do. And that's what they see, is a boarded-up courthouse that used to stand as a symbol for Fairburn. So if you could give us a timeline, if you could put money towards just making the outside look presentable so that this town can look presentable, and so that people that are driving through would want to be part of it. So if you could just give us a timeline, because I know that there was money or something in the last three years to go towards that courthouse. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Barry Porter.
I'd like to first thank the mayor and all members of the council.
Yes, sir, you know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been a resident of Fairburn since nineteen seventy-eight, me and my family. And Fairburn back then was more of a rural city. Y'all would've made this a modern city. Believe me, y'all have done a great job, and I salute each and every one of you. We all gonna have problems in the city. That's what it's about. That's why we got a great mayor and a great council to help us solve these problems. One of our problems that we do have is a problem that code enforcement is doing an excellent job about helping us get it done. I live on Sir Charles Drive, and it's kind of turned into more of, some areas, some neighbors got more goats, more roosters, you know, than they got children. We can't sleep at night.
Uh-oh.
We can't, in the morning, the roosters is up before we can get up. The ghost is having more fun than we do. So code enforcement is on the case.
Awesome.
So I salute the leader of code enforcement and all the agents. With that said, I want to let you know that we need to do a little bit more for the seniors. Our senior citizens is our background, and there are generations to come. So we just have to keep a little more things done, keep them more active. Now, I'm a retired veteran, as relative retired public county, so I try to give seniors tax help at no charge to help them. So y'all doing a great job, and I'm gonna let you know that Ms. Vera, she's helping us with all these animals. I'm gonna send some of these goats down to her house. And if not, we're gonna send them all to the mayor and all your people, y'all know. Thank you very much for all the professional work y'all have done in making the city a fairment. Because when I first got here, all the people in Atlanta didn't want to come down here. Oh, you're in a country fight. Now we can't get rid of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
The last speaker is Teresa Curry.
Ms. Curry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here a couple of months ago for a variance for a take-five oil change in a retail on Sonoya Road, seven-nine-one-four Sonoya Road. And since that time, Duncan has approached the owner to see if they can move their Duncan that's just down the road by the interstate to this location. So we wouldn't be creating a new drive-through restaurant. We would be relocating one. Staff says that your code doesn't allow new drive-throughs and that we would need to come before council to get approval to relocate one. So I don't think you can rule tonight, but at least I'd like to raise the issue so I can get a response from the city administrator.
Okay.
And then the owner for Duncan is also here and would like to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name, please? Shazan Chinara. I've got an uncle that lives in the city of Fairburn. He's lived here with his two daughters for the last fifteen, twenty years, and so this is his community. And so I understand the sense of community that you guys are trying to build here is have more of an elevated standard of living for your residents. And that includes better dining establishments than just another typical fast food restaurant. And I think that elevates a community. So in speaking to the request of wanting to relocate a Duncan drive-through that's on Fairburn right now, right by eighty-five, probably a couple hundred feet over to this new proposed location, I believe there's two factors involved that you guys should consider. One is a public safety use, which anybody would tell you, as they try and leave that establishment, they are immediately in a right turn lane of oncoming traffic trying to get on the freeway. That is the exact reason that Chick-fil-A relocated as well. And that's the same reason that we are requesting to do the same. Again, not create a new drive-through, just relocate. So if that one was relocated, that one would get shut down. Second thing is, if that were to happen, that opens up that area where there is a Chick-fil-A that's closed down right now, and then there would be a closed-down Duncan for a developer to come in and take that massive territory and then bring an establishment that the community would be proud of, whether it's, I don't know, an Outback Steakhouse or something that allows the residents of this community to have higher-paying wages, have a higher standard of living where they want to go to dine out. And I know that's the direction the community's moving in, so it would allow for that because there would be enough area. When you only have boxes of parcel real estate, you're only gonna end up with fast food restaurants. So it'd be my humble request for you guys to consider that as I work to try and elevate the community of Fairburn.
And what's gonna happen, sir, just so you know, like I said, the city administrator will please send your in writing to the city administrator. He'll talk with the planning and zoning director. And I don't know if it'll require a public hearing or whatever, but that will come to our body in a formal, in a formal way, basically. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you as someone.
Okay.
The next section is approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes for the city council meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Members of the council, you have before you, city council minutes for July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Motion to approve has been made in second by Ms. Hudson and second by Ms. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. And we'll go to our first item.
The first item is gonna be a public hearing for the special event venue text amendment. The recommendation is for mayor and council to approve the proposed text amendment and the additional regulations recommended by staff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item before you is a text amendment for a update to the special event venue. The applicant is Mr. Joe Harvey, the owner of twenty-five Smith Street in downtown. Initially, the applicant and the tenant approached staff about having events in the downtown area. After reviewing our ordinances, we realized that there was a gap. There are provisions to allow for a standalone event, so for instance, if somebody wanted to host one event. But if somebody wanted to host continuous events throughout the year, they would have to apply for an administrative permit as opposed to having an occupational license to be able to have those events year-round. Of course, with any text amendments, we review the benefits and some of the challenges. We understand that the downtown McShuse area is an area where we want to see more sit-down restaurants, more people walking, and having an event venue could provide the opportunity to have some areas that are, you know, a known place to invite outsiders to come and enjoy Fairburn. But there are, of course, challenges. For instance, the required amount of support, if there is not sufficient parking, things like the roadway traffic signage, access to emergency vehicles, things like that. With any special event permit, every department has an opportunity to look at a request. The police, fire, building, zoning, of course, and we're all looking at it, including economic development, to see what the impact is. Having a venue, of course, depending on the size, could be detrimental. So we wanted to make sure that there were provisions, along with the applicant's request, to make sure that if it goes well and it's well-managed, it could be very beneficial. But considering the proximity of the downtown McShuse to so many residential areas, we want to make sure that there's also language in there that requires any applicant provide a plan that shows exactly how you plan to manage the event. Of course, there are also provisions in terms of making sure that there's things like a traffic and parking plan. Waste management is one of those big things when you have like events. And we also want to make sure that best-case scenario, it's something that, you know, brings people from all across. But we've also added some violations and penalties and things like that in case it gets out of hand because it could. So we want to make sure that there's a balance between allowing anyone in the downtown area who is seeking to open a venue the opportunity to do so, but balancing that with making sure that we have enough regulations on the back end, that if things get out of hand, that we could, if that were the case, revoke that occupational permit if it became detrimental to the surrounding community. So that's very high level, what the regulations are. So that's very high level, what the regulations are. We've had an interest from various parties over the last two years, maybe about four or five, that have been interested in venues or hosted events downtown, so it's not a huge amount. But one of the concerns from the Planning and Zoning Commission was what if this really takes off and there's not enough space for the things that we like, or it's not, you know, not enough space for parking and things like that, and just making sure that every site downtown doesn't become an event venue. So there is a clause in there about having some distance requirements, and we can re-look at that as we kind of see how many we get come in. But staff's recommendation is approval with those conditions that were included as a part of the packet.
Okay. Members of council, hold on a minute, I'm gonna bring the item to a public hearing in this case. Now entertain a motion to actually open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Which has been made in probably second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. At this time, if there's anyone here that wish to speak in opposition of this item, would you please come forward? In opposition of this item.
Good evening, mayor, everyone in council.
Good evening.
I understand she's talking about parking, right, but by the time.
Sir, could you pronounce your name?
Evan Jurels. The owner of L and K Liquidation, and also the owner of the Vince City Downtown, twenty-five Smith Street and twenty-seven Smith Street.
Yes, sir.
By the time we have events, right, events start six, six thirty, seven o'clock, I don't know what you call it. Most stores, most, what you call them, downtown are closed. You can ride through, I'll probably show y'all ride through the streets of Fairburn downtown.
Hold on one second, sir, just want to make sure. You're speaking in opposition of this item, right?
No, you're speaking for.
No, sir, I can't, okay, this time is allocated for those that are speaking in opposition. We're coming next, we're coming to you next.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone here, I'm sorry, is there anyone here that's in opposition? I have to, I have to give due process in this case, okay? At this point, at this point, it looks like I have no one in opposition, sir. Come on back up now.
Practice make perfect.
Okay. And so we're starting to start the clock over.
No, see, they keep coming, I mean, it's all, all to keep talking about parking. By the time event goes on about six, seven thirty at night, it starts, it starts at night. Majority of Fairburn is closed down, shut down. So you shouldn't have to worry about parking. Yeah, we, we just had an event there, and we had no problems. To me, I lived in like four different states, and I opened up businesses in four different states, and never had a problem the way I have in Fairburn. Never. What I'm saying, like, permit, you gotta, she wants, just talking about paying for permits and stuff for each event that you have. I think, I, I think, I just feel that's useless. You paying, we paying six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for rent, and then on top of that, y'all looking for us to pay for permits, which I think is unfair. We trying to build the city up, the city of Fairburn downtown. We trying to make it great, we trying to make it look a bit that way when people come in. It look presentable, it looks great, what people want to keep driving through. That they're bringing more residents to come that wants to move and be, be a part of this. But the thing that you got to go through is like, why? Just tell me, somebody just tell me why. Why is it so difficult? Like, instead of arguing and fussing the way that y'all carry on, y'all should put that more time in trying to fix downtown, downtown Fairburn. Serious, that what y'all should, y'all should take that energy, right, and trying to fix your city up instead of going at each other, and stop worrying about the income. It's not about the income, it's about the outcome. Because if you get your outcome right, right, that's going to outweigh the income. I mean, you just got to get it together, I mean, it's, it's, it's sad. It's like God was already saying, fussing among each other ain't gonna make that happen. We all grown here. That's all I got to say.
Is there anyone else here that wish to speak in support of this item? Please come forward. Anyone else? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries. At this time, you have before you, members of council, I'll bring this now item to the floor. You have before you, members of council, a special event venue text amendment. Is there a motion?
I move, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments by council?
I want to start.
Ms. Hudson, go ahead, and then Mr. Whitmore.
Yes. Ms. Brooks, come up for a minute.
Yes.
It's like a three sixty, I know Mr. Phillips would know what I'm talking about with this. When we get to, did you remember, did that thought come to your head? What I want to first say, though, is commend this administration for coming up with this because in honesty, before I got on council, I held a, what we called it, a special event, right, Mr. Phillips? And I apologize, you all really didn't know. You didn't know it was something that you hadn't did for the first time. So when I looked at the policy and saw waste management was in there, that wasn't even a part of my application that you all had approved. But we, the planning committee of my organization, put all of that in the plan to make sure that we wasn't gonna put a burden on the city, we're leaving trash behind, all the way down to the porta potties that was down there. So what I want to say is thank you for bringing this because what I want our community to understand, that as Fairburn grows, so does our ordinances and our planning to keep things fair and equitable in this city. We have to remember that taxpayers bear the burden for everything, as well as our businesses, I respect that. But Fairburn is growing and evolving. And I want you guys to understand, and Ms. Brooks, thank you for this, is that when I looked at our policies, we were lacking in this area. If we have a special event, to whatever extent, we have to be able to cover the city regardless. It is liable, it is our, is our due diligence to do so. So I would like to encourage members of our business community to work with our planning and zoning and our administrative team, just like the, the residents do with our comp plan, to talk about these things and see what can be ironed out. One shoe size doesn't fit for all, but Fairburn definitely have to have some standards of protocol in place when it comes to that. That's really all I had to say, and I wanted to let my colleagues know that when I did this before, you know, I was a little, y'all got a public apology because man oh man, they worked with me to make it happen. And the Fairburn Family Fund Day was a success as a result of that. So we didn't have any of those things in place when I applied, and in hindsight, it should have been. Because I could have been, it could have been a harder time to put this event off. And I want to also let the public know, and this happened in twenty twenty-three. I also want them to know, you remember that one? I also want the public to know that this administration did work hard for this event to go off for me. But I support this. I want our community and our businesses to start being proactive and getting in touch with planning and zoning about the issues and concerns that you have. If you find that this policy is somewhere biased, if it somewhere does not speak to the authority of which or to the ideas that you feel that it should, it is not off the table that their feedback be submitted. Because I want to see your feedback, and I want to make sure that your voice is heard in, in this, in the writing of this policy. That's the way, let's get to the table. It sounds like there was a little bit confusion on what I heard about for or against it. So Ms. Brookins, if you can, or Mr. Phillips can get with our, our business and our constituent so that he's informed, and give him an opportunity to get some feedback, and we want to know what his feedback is. So when we critique this policy, his voice in the community is heard, that's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Whitmore?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Well, I had an opportunity to speak to the applicant for this particular event, as well as covering the difficulties in trying to get to the point where this can actually take place. I'm gonna remind us all, sitting on this dais and sitting out in the community, we had events at the Frankie Arnold Staging Courtyard, which was massive. Hear what I'm saying, massive. Cars, individuals coming to the events and everything else. This is nowhere near that. So this is where policy and common sense comes into play, and this is where we, as elected officials as well as staff, should be reviewing our policies on a more frequent basis and seeing the lapse or the part that does not fit anymore. This is part of our jobs. You know, I, I look at, we always talking about we want to get businesses downtown, but then we restrict the businesses with policies that we have in place. So it doesn't add up and it doesn't make sense. All right, so I'm glad this is before us now. I was looking at the, the fines that could be levied. I would ask the city administrator to take another look at that. I think it's, it's probably higher than what it should be, number one, especially since we have had events down in that area. So we need to do the most common, take the most common sense approach and not find a way to be prohibitive. Again, I already talked about updating policies, and again, we here at all the time. Economic development, bringing in new businesses, trying to find a way to boost up our downtown, make it a drawing place for people from other cities to come and visit and patronize our businesses. We have opportunity to put everything in place and make that happen because we are situated to succeed. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Ah, yes. First and foremost, Ms. Brookins, thank you for being so thorough in this text amendment, and looking at everything that could possibly take place, also looking at any disturbances as it relates to the downtown mixed-use area because we have neighbors that are close to this area. So I appreciate that, but I need some clarity in reference to the difference between the current ordinance and the special, the special use, no, 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 the special events venue.
Yes.
Okay, I, I need, can you make a distinction between those two in reference to the ordinance and how you look at it from a planning and zoning lens? And what possible businesses are we talking about as it relates to the special events venues?
Yes. So I believe it was a little bit more than five years ago when the initial regulations were put in place. And so you had various different zoning districts that were allowed. The one missing language in all of that was downtown mixed-use. And I can only assume that that was because of the proximity to residential. So the balancing act was considering that although we don't have all the residential, we do have some residents who live downtown. I mean, we anticipate having additional growth happen in the future. So you want to make sure that if you're introducing a new concept, a new business that could be wildly popular the way we want it to be, that there is a balancing act in terms of also having the regulations, regulations in place so that, you know, if it becomes very popular, we can also make sure that it's managed well. We assume that this applicant and every other applicant is going to be able to have a successful business in downtown. But if something happens where they are, they don't have sufficient staff, or it's not traffic managed or something like that, we want to be able to at least have some provisions that protect the residents who live here now and may live in the future. So that's really the, the biggest issue. In the special event venue language, there was no mention of downtown mixed-use. So anytime an applicant came to our office and said, I want to open a venue, we had to tell them that's not in the regulations. And to Mr. Harvey's credit, the property owner, he mentioned that, you know, he would support his tenant in terms of just making sure that they got through that process. But I did tell him it would take some time because there are businesses that are low pressure, don't really have a lot of impact, but then there are areas that become very popular. And so those can be detrimental and positive to the community, so we just want to make sure that all of that is balanced.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess you want to dot your i's and cross your t's now that you're looking into making this addition to downtown. And as I was reading through the proposed changes that you were looking at and addressing, it seems like you covered a lot of things that I think I would, as a resident downtown, would want you to cover and look at. But one of the things I wanted to just, give me some example of what businesses would be. Would this be, I still need some clarity on this. Would this be a building that Mr. Harvey, you're Mr. Harvey? No, who's, is Mr. Harvey here? No, okay. He owns a business, a building, and he wants to utilize it for people to come in and have whatevers.
Baby showers, if somebody wanted to have some sort of like reunion. Depending on the size of the venue, how many people you could have in there would vary based on the fire marshal's review of it. But it's essentially saying that if you have a space that is underutilized and you would like to rent it out to individuals for parties or showers or whatever kind of event that you can think of, you can now do that with this proposed text amendment in the downtown mixed-use zoning district.
Okay, all right. So I also wanted to, I don't know if I saw anything about security for these events downtown. Is there a requirement for that, or would it depend on the type of rental or the type of special event that they would have at their location?
I, it would vary. So depending on the hours of operation and the information that's provided to us, that's why we have public safety as a part of the review process to make sure that there is, you know, adequate security language in there. I don't want to speak for PD, but making sure that they are a part of the review process, I think, helps us, let us know if there are any other, you know, conditions or things like that that we need to discuss with the applicant, just to make sure that it's safe.
Right.
So similar to when we do a temporary event permit, public safety is a part of that review with this request, they would also be a part of it, and they would be aware of when the event schedules and things like that. And they could, you know, work with the applicants as well to make sure that if there is any additional information that's required, that they are well aware. And we can also make sure that as a part of the building plan process, if they make any modifications to the interior, that public safety is aware of that as well.
Okay.
That includes both police and fire.
Okay. And one other thing, noise, decimals, don't we have an ordinance in reference to that?
We do.
Okay.
That includes the downtown area, and there's also some provisions for loud parties and things of that nature.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, any other members of council for that? It's ma'am, go ahead.
Have you determined the occupancy capacity of the space?
Yes. The fire marshal did review the requests, and he has done a walkthrough at the facility and said that he states that they would probably could have as many as one hundred and eighty-five guests. They probably won't have that many, but that is what the space would allow.
And does that accommodate the outside area too?
No, that's just the interior.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mark, I had a couple of questions for you. Again, first of all, let me just say this much as it relates to the planning and zoning director in this case. We've been thorough, probably beyond, probably most cities that I'm aware. I, I set through Fulton County's Board of Commissioners meeting, if you hear the fighting about zoning, it is almost relentless. and a lot of it ends up being as a result of it not being adequately addressed in the ordinance. And so as a result, actually Ms. Hudson made a very great point, and that was the liability. Regardless of what happens, the liability is in the city's favor if something goes down when it's all said and done. And so, which the first question anyone is going to ask is, number one, what did your, did your ordinance authorize this? If so, what was, what provision was in place to prepare for? The, one of the questions I had as it relates to, again, if you remember, we had a venue that was right there at Smith Street and 29, entertainment, I guess a rental hall. I'm sorry, this is before your tenure actually in this case, where one of the biggest issues that came up was the parking because of all the cars in the street that was interfering. And so, and so the protocol of a code route basically helps us to fight that, especially if you're in it with an accident for any reason, whether it be an auto accident or a physical, and someone falls. So the proper plan, I wanted to ask a question, when I was looking at that code that you put up a few minutes ago when I went through it. Just out of curiosity, I know there's a, talked about trash in this case, whatever venue, whatever event you put there. If there's a lot of trash, my question would be, how does that, tell me what the protocol is for the person that's, in this case, this gentleman, have an event there? Because there's a big trash container there, back there, and there's one actually behind CVS. And my question is, the vendor that is, the people that's paying for that don't expect their containers to be filled. And so, tell me how that's going to be addressed?
So there's a section in the proposed ordinance that was added. It says, "The venue operators shall be required to submit a waste management detailing trash collection, disposal methods, and post-event cleanup procedures. This plan must be approved as a part of the venue's overall event management plan. Additional onsite enclosures shall be provided and maintained to contain all waste generated during the events and to prevent litter from affecting the surrounding properties."
Okay. And let me just say one other thing too. Members of council, you guys will remember, upon Ms. Brookings' arrival, she's gone through it alone herself in conjunction with Ms. Valerie Ross. And I want to thank her for, she just happened to be tonight. And so, we went through it thorough, what I call scraping of our policies in this case. I want to thank you for that because again, it's been a lot of policy review that you've brought to this council that has probably saved us a bunch of headaches down the road. So let me just thank you publicly about that. So I have the question, actually you answered my question as it relates to dealing with parking. And so my quest, and trash, so those are the two areas I had a concern about. Members of council, Ms. Jones and then Mr. Whitmore?
Just one other question. Could you, given that it's a special event versus a business, if you will, what are the requirements regarding liability?
So it's a permit, but the business owner will be required to have an occupational permit. So the event itself, they will have the sole liability because they will be, they'll have a business license and just like any other business in the city, they'll have a certain level of responsibility.
So if something were to happen, it is their insurance or they're the responsible party for any liability that may be required?
I defer to legal on that in terms of the liability.
It's a regular business, alright. Okay, thank you.
Then actually, Mr. Whitmore and then Ms. Davis?
Uh, thank you mayor. And I do agree with your comments, mayor. I think that under Ms. Valerie Ross, attorney Valerie Ross, with the firm that she works with and also with the previous planning and zoning individual, and now with Ms. Brookings. And I can say, I do recall where we went through an overhaul throughout the city, looking at ordinances. And I will submit that sometimes you miss things. Sometimes we miss things. We had a situation with one of our local churches that had to come through planning and zoning because of something that was missed based on that geographical area. How most of them were zoned one way, they forgot about that one parcel, alright? So there's opportunities, there's always opportunities to improve and get better. And a lot of times when they come up, we address them. That's just what you did in the one case that I just mentioned. And again, I believe you have a plan of going through certain periodic periods to review any ordinances that we have to evaluate the effectiveness of those ordinances in reference to current times. Is that not correct?
That is correct. We have completed a zoning audit. It was done in partnership with the comprehensive plan draft, so you'll see that when it's released. We wanted to make sure that with the comprehensive plan, there was also a lot of opportunity for engagement. But the residents told us a lot of things that they wanted to see. So you have your comprehensive plan that has, this is the things that we want to see happen in the future. So we also wanted a zoning audit to show the gap in between that. So this is your policy, this is your guiding book, but this is what you have in place now. So we have that information available.
Okay. And under the, under this updated policy that you have or special event permits, is there alcohol included in that? And if so, what are requirements in order to ensure that the applicant has what he or she needs to run a special event along with availability of alcohol?
So currently, the police department handles any requests related to alcohol permits, and we haven't changed that as a part of the recommendation.
So that would be for each event, you have to go through PD for a liquor pouring?
I'm not familiar with the regulations, but I believe the chief is available.
Good evening, mayor and council. To answer your question, sir, there is a process for each individual's special event. A number of years ago, the city passed an ordinance where if there is going to be alcohol at a special event, that vendor has to have an alcohol license on file. There's an application process that goes through the police department whereby a background process is completed and checked.
Okay. So just for my own clarity, okay, I don't have a liquor store. So I'm not selling wines and spirits and everything else. I have an event. So something that I'm familiar with is usually when they have events like this, there would be someone that already has a pouring license that have gone through the city of Fairburn where the background check and everything was done, and now they are available to pour. Are we talking about the same thing?
Yes, sir. Although there's an additional review for each individual event. It's not a blanket permit to do whatever you want all through the year. Each individual event is reviewed, so we get that periodic check of the background and make sure nothing's changed.
Okay, so it could be a different pouring license per event, is what you're saying to me? Okay, thank you chief.
Sir, Ms. Davis?
Yes, Ms. Brookings, I have one more question. Will there be any limitations to the types of events?
Yes. So there is some provision in there in terms of if somebody wanted to turn the event venue into a entertainment establishment. That would be primarily for dancing and things of that nature.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have to ask you, please refrain from conversation so we can hear it for the public record. Go ahead, thank you so much. Go ahead, Ms. Brookings. I missed, I missed what you just said.
There's a provision titled "Music and Entertainment". It says, "Music or entertainment shall not be the primary purpose of the special event permit, always shall be secondary." So that means if you're having an event and you have someone who's there playing music, that's okay. But if the facility is only utilized as a club, that's not allowed. But you could have it as a secondary, so that is included. And that was a part of the original regulations. We haven't changed that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Ms. Jones, I mean, would you yield, because I want to ask a question, you kind of asked a similar question. My question was going to be to you regarding, along those lines, where it's going to be, tell me what protocols you have in place to make sure that it's not, oh my goodness, I caught myself. It's not a club being used versus, what's the, what's the check and balance in this case?
So as a part of the special event venue, the sum total of the complete application, we would look at what the proposed potential calendar of events are. And you can't predict everything, so that's why we have the violations and penalties as a part of that process. And with event venues, typically if it's in the evening or something of that nature, it's not necessarily a code enforcement issue, it would become more of a police department issue. So in that way, we want to make sure that there's sufficient language in there that if there were an event that got out of hand, you know, music or anything that became a public nuisance to the surrounding area, that anyone who showed up onsite would have the sufficient provisions to be able to shut down that event if it was endangering people's lives.
Gotcha. Mr. Whitmore, then Ms. Jones again?
One additional question.
Yes.
Actually, I'm coming to you, attorney Ross. Okay, we heard a description of club, alright? And there's another one, lounge, alright? Can you break that down for me? Because again, when you have language to say in one thing, there's also another thing. And it seems like restrictive is actually being employed versus an opportunity for a business to get up and running and thrive. And everybody, everybody is not a preacher. Everybody is not a sister. There's people that drink and there's people that don't drink. I can't tell them they cannot drink because I don't drink. That's not applicable, alright? So now we have this club versus lounge, and I'm just kind of curious to see if there's any legal differentiation?
I'd have to check and see if special event venue is defined, but it is not within the range of club or lounge. This tax amendment is just for these businesses that are like halls or, you know, have spaces for like Denise said, baby showers, reading receptions, things of that nature. And it's going through the application process for staff to know exactly what the event is for each, you know, each occasion. But this tax amendment does not contemplate clubs or lounges because that's regulated by an entirely different section of the ordinance.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring that up because it was just mentioned. Then the other thing I will say that I was fortunate enough to go into, was it 25 Washington, was that address? 25 Washington, a client of mine invited me to his mother's birthday party. 25 Smith, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. But I was invited to his mother's birthday party, nice event. Everybody that was in there, everybody was cool, it was an all-white event, had a good time, alright? So you can have various ideas of special events, and they can be accepted within, into a community for what it's doing. So I just wanted to add that additional clarity from my own personal, alright? And again, I don't believe in trying to restrict or not allow businesses to come in and open up and try to do what they can to help bring what we're looking for in the downtown area, which is night entertainment. Let me be real. That's what I hear all the time. There's nothing to do in the city of Fairburn. So that's why they go elsewhere, downtown Atlanta, East Point, on Broad Street. They don't come to Fairburn because there's nothing. Thank you, mayor.
And now Ms. Jones?
Yes, I wanted to ask about, downtown has an overlay district.
Yes.
Does this particular address, is that included in the guidelines of the overlay district?
Yes.
Could you just talk a little bit, well, first of all, was this shared with the applicant about our overlay district, what that is, why we've instituted it? You know, the historic downtown Fairburn, et cetera?
There was no discussion regarding the overlay district. We typically have those discussion if an applicant is proposing to do elevation changes. As it currently stands, there are no proposed elevation changes.
Alright, so there's nothing in the overlays district that would restrict this?
No, it's actually beneficial to businesses because the overlay district has provisions that encourage more density, like multifamily development, things like that are permitted by right. There are no parking minimums, which does help if you're having a smaller event. Typically, parking can be a big issue if you're a small business and you don't need as much parking as other areas. So the overlay district, to that extent, is beneficial. Now, if it decides to, if the business grows and they try to expand, then we would have the discussion regarding the design standards.
Alright, thank you for that.
And I make my final comment, and we can go, we can take it to a vote. Also, let me mention too, as it relates to, and Mr. Whitmore, you were actually right as it relates to they're not having anything to do downtown. Part of that, I want to make sure for clarification purposes, Ms. Ciber Athanathie, who just happened to be here tonight, as well as with the main street, there's been a massive effort beyond shadow of a doubt to fill several venues that, excuse me, lots that are closed and that are empty. I mean, we've had businesses, businesses beyond belief that would, that basically by now, if one-third of those lots had actually been made available to fill, this place downtown would be the talk of probably of 29 right now. And again, so I just want to make sure it's clear that the staff has gone beyond the call of duty of this individual that owns these lots, for whatever reason. We just have not been able to be successful in terms of bringing businesses that would, that they both, I guess, the city and them, and the owner agrees, whatever reason could go in those lots. And again, like I said, Mr. Whitmore, you got a great point. That's part of why we've been hell-bent on trying. Again, Ms. Athanathie is getting tested this because she's tried to be, she's tried to help fill those spots on Main Street. And so, but again, we're going to still continue our dialogue with that particular vendor, but it's not because there's no effort to fill those lots. Matter of fact, I think what's going to happen, and I will, and I'll stop right here. I think this legislative body will may have to employ as a method of, it's called vacant property ordinances. If I remember correctly, where it's actually, that's something this body is actually going to have to probably take up very soon because again, there's a lot of interest in our downtown area. Go ahead, Ms. Davis, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Again, I want to commend our planning and zoning, Ms. Brookings, the members of planning and zoning, for doing your due diligence upfront. Looking at everything, every possibility, covering, checking everything off. Because what we do not want to do is allow a business to have a venue or whatever and we forgot something or something happens that we got to pull it back or whatever. So thank you so much for your due diligence, like you always do in these tax amendments. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Hudson, again, and then Mr. Whitmore again.
So I want to go back, since we're talking to the, about the downtown, and this is for us on this dais and our attorneys. We have some existing and persistent actors that don't want to follow the rules in terms of where we are going in the downtown area. We have businesses that may own their own land, and those things are being used in opposition to where we're going. We have, we have to be really now diligently legal with what's happening in the downtown because for almost four years now, one particular place has laid victim, I mean vacant. And it has been a eyesore for the city. And I am starting to receive a lot of phone calls about what is going on with this particular space. So this is our wheelhouse right here in what we do to legislate and bring order and structure in Fairburn. We'll never get where we need to go with the downtown if we let some people not be held accountable. And it's time, whatever it takes, we do a lot of legal litigation that has come to us. It is time for us to be proactive and set the narrative and to set the standard straight. And because our citizens keep asking for the downtown, asking for the downtown, asking for the downtown. But if we have owners who are not keeping their property up, whose spaces are vacant, this should have been gone yesteryear. Because when I go to East Point, when I go to College Park, I always think about how the downtown in Fairburn couldn't look for us and why we're here today.
I value this experience and this space on this dais because I'm digging deep and I'm learning about infrastructure, community development and planning and, and all of those things. Which one of my conversations with you, Ms. Brookins, when I first took, uh, this seat, was to do a deep dive into our zoning and our ordinances to see where we was in planning and zoning, what upgrades and changes that we need to make. And, and I'll land with this. We definitely have to be strategic in looking at schools, any medical facilities that are on our, within our wheelhouse and rezoning this stuff to special permit so it gives us more control. And I learned that in our last training with, at the GMA, uh, about how we get our biggest wins in our downtown development. And that came out in that course about looking at what we could definitely change to special permit, every school, churches that sits in here. So that because we are landlocked, we now have a plan that makes anybody that wants to be, uh, a part of Fairburn or developer understand that they got to come with a plan. It's no more up in the air doing what we want to do. We are in a time where we have to look at our resources, know what they are. If they are going to be scarce, our planning needs to plan around it to make sure that we can address it from every level. When we talk about quality of life, that was mentioned ear- earlier, we're talking about all of those systems, all of those things that could inadvertently affect us in a negative way or improve us in a positive way. And so for the downtown, I mean, the elephant, I'm, I'm addressed the elephant in the room all the time. This downtown is, 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 I, I don't want to keep talking about this. If we got bad actors in here, let's get them in the court. Let's take our city to the place that it need to go. Let's stop playing with individuals down here. We're serving, we're doing, we're giving, we're delivering now. But now we have to come with a tougher stance that we are going to be situated to succeed even if we have to move you out the way. That's how I'm coming. Thank you.
Mr. Whitmore?
Yes, Ms. Brookins and also Chief and City Administrator. I'm going to ask of you to, to do something. I do know a business owner that, uh, had a very successful business, tried to come here into Fairburn, that was going to have the same type of business. But I, I just want to make sure that we're looking at surrounding communities, and I applaud you, I know you're coming from Fayetteville, right? You did a great job there, and you're doing a great job here. But I'm really curious to find out is, if what we're trying to put in place for alcohol pouring license, if we're not going or if we're not looking at the most reasonable and best practice. And I can give you a name of somebody that you can call. And, uh, but I would also, uh, like to know what the successful downtown areas were able to do in relations to this particular issue. You got College Park, you got East Point, you have Haytville. That I've, I've visited all three. And, uh, I, I think we just wanted to just double-check, dot our i's, cross our t's, so we don't have to come back and address it again.
Mr. Administrator, or, I didn't know if you want to comment?
Oh, I wasn't looking for a comment. I was asking, I was asking the City Administrator, Ms. Brookins and the Chief of Police to take a second look and let's make sure that whatever we're putting together is going to be what makes sense, uh, easability, if you will, so that when, when a client or a business owner has a event, that we're not making it restrictive, but offering up even kill playing field.
Understood, we will take a look at best practices in those successful downtowns to ensure that we have the best position for our ordinance as it relates to specific alcohol pouring issues.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. Ma'am, and sir.
I'm, I'm trying to make sure where I am. Uh, did I have a motion on the floor or do I need to bring it to the floor?
We, we.
Okay, I've been, okay, I have a motion on the floor, so in this case, I'm ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
The next agenda item is number four, award RFP number 25-014, City of Fairburn Sound Engineering Agreement to Elect. I'm not even sure how that's.
Yes, Eclectic Artists. Good evening.
LLC. The recommendation is for Mayor and Council to approve the agreement with artists to provide sound engineering services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This evening, we are asking for approval to award RFP 2514 to Eclectic Artists to provide turnkey sound engineering and staging services for the final two 2025 Third Friday Concert Series events. The contract not to exceed $41,250. Just a little bit, um, historical context, um, the RFP was issued twice to maintain competitive, um, opportunities. Uh, approximately a thousand fifty-seven vendors were notified, thirty-six downloaded the bid documents, and three bids were received. Two of the bids were non-responsive. Eclectic Artists scored highest on responsiveness, capability and compliance. Also, uh, it supports a city's goal to deliver high-quality professionally managed community events. Uh, the vendor, a little bit about Eclectic Artists, they're founded in 2017 in Atlanta, Georgia. Four hundred-plus concerts nationwide. Past clients include universities, municipalities, county fairs, large-scale community events. Notable concerts were Knox County Fair, Texas Southern University Step Show, Johns Hopkins Hop-Toberfest, and also City of South Fulton's Juneteenth Event. Uh, key services that they provide are audiovisual setup, mixing breakdown, lighting, most of the, um, uh, elements or technical expertise that we use for our concert series. So it is staff recommendations that we have approval of this contract. They would be handling the final two, the August fifteenth concert, as well as the September nineteenth, um, twenty, I mean, I'm sorry, the Hispanic Heritage Event. So, or if there are any questions.
Okay, let me bring item to the floor.
Okay.
Members of Council, you have before you to award an RFP for the City of Fairburn Sound Engineering Agreement to Elec- Elec-
Eclectic Artists.
Eclectic Artists. I'll have to make sure I say it correctly.
That's all right.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you.
Motion's made by Ms. Davis and second by Ms. Hudson. Any questions or comments, Mr. Whitmore? Then Ms. Davis?
Yes, ma'am. You, uh, you indicated that this is just for the two remaining events?
Yes, sir. Um, procurement, um, the process, um, has a threshold in terms of how much money we can expend without an official RFP. Um, so in this case, we hit that thresh, we met that threshold, so we had to execute a RFP.
Okay, so that goes for a certain length of time?
It's more, in this case, it is the funding aspect, um, not so much as the time as it was the threshold. We couldn't exceed, um, I believe that's fifty thousand.
Okay, and, and the reason why I'm asking this question, because we have one additional main event that will be coming up the first Saturday in October?
And that's, that will be using a different, um, um, my apologies. The threshold, I believe, is by department and not necessarily by the, the contractor. So in my case, I, I've, I've hit that threshold from my understanding of the procurement guidelines.
So my question to you, Mr. City Administrator, for forty-one thousand dollars for two events, and we have a main event coming up where we're going to have a larger participation within the city of Fairburn? Is there some economy of scale that we can, uh, look at here? And you know, that's one of my favorite words.
Absolutely. We always look for economies of scale. Typically, the Fall Festival and the Third Friday Concert Series are procured separately as two separate events. The Fall Festival is much larger for that one single event than any single concert. Depending on, uh, the services and ancillary services needed for that, we've typically procured that separately. So that is funded for the Fall Festival and we've procured separately. This is to complete out the Third Friday Concert Series. As it relates to future concert series, we would do another RFP for future concert series.
Okay, so for 2025, all of our Third Friday events was with one vendor? And two, this, the last two that we have?
Correct. Well, let me be more specific. We use quotes, so we never just select one vendor, right? You have to get at least three quotes and then go through procurement and one is selected from that process.
My, my question and my hesitation is, and I, I think I got the answer based on the response, but for all the Third Fridays leading up to this point, with the exception of the last two, we had one vendor that was doing lighting, speakers, et cetera.
One vendor selected from the quotes that were provided.
Selected from the quotes.
Correct.
Okay, so, so I guess what I'm hearing is based on, um, the way things have been set up for actually economic development, that they didn't have the threshold to go the extra two events?
Well, the preferences to do with the RFP. Uh, several of those same vendors applied for the RFP, but as she was summarizing at the beginning, did not qualify based on completing their application. So procurement does the screening once you submit for the RFP. And so some of those same vendors that have provided previous services, their applications were either not complete, had missing information, and in that instance, they're not able to move forward.
Automatically yixed out, basically.
There you go, I got it.
And Mr. Whitmore, if you don't mind, you, you finish?
I have something else, but if.
Oh, go ahead, I'll let you finish because I was going to just add, I was just going to add, if you don't mind, if you don't mind yielding.
I don't mind yielding, you have something to add to this.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in, in this case, you know, as a person that's in the compliance, procurement compliance, in this case, one of the things that, uh, as relates to him talking about vendors that did not finish their, uh, application, did not, uh, did not provide the proper documentation, what happens if you end up awarding it to someone that, that is deemed, that should have been deemed by procurement's, uh, language as non-responsive? Uh, what happens now you end up with a bid protest, so now you end up with literally, uh, depending on who it is, wants to sit here and string it out because now you've got to go through a hearing process as it relates to dealing with a, uh, a possibility or inadvertently awarding to what is technically deemed a non-responsive bid. So I just, I wanted just to make sure.
No, that's, that's quite understandable, Mayor. I mean, we've, we've gone through a lot of processes, uh, here within this city, and uh, I think the most, uh, uh, successful one that we had is, uh, we had an outside vendor that was reviewing everything, and for those, uh, participants that, uh, did not have their i's dotted and t's crossed, they were automatically put off to pasture, if you will. And we just dealt with those that had all the correct information and, uh, and, uh, continued to communicate and work with us. And even that vendor reached out to those individuals that did not successfully complete all the paperwork as well. So definitely understand that, and, and I don't know anything about, um, um, eclectic artists, you know, but I was just looking at the, the cost remedy around it just for two, uh, two events. That's where my concerns were. And I don't even know what the normal, uh, price tag would be for something like that for one event.
That amount is not to exceed. So we're not telling you, so this is not to say that they're going to spend that entire amount. It will not exceed that amount.
Will not exceed. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah, my question was, um, what do we utilize in the past that we had to go out and do the RFP now for just two more concerts? And I think it's, it's been answered, more or less. Because it was like, uh, it's like a standout for me to do this for just to the final concert. So I want to know, what do we do prior to this and why did we have to go there? So it's been answered, but thank you, we were on the same track, Whitmore and myself. Thank you.
Any more questions, members of council?
Just one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So overall, this, this route is to avoid a bid war. Is that it? Is that in a nutshell, y'all?
We have a procurement policy this council has approved.
Okay.
And so this is to make sure we are following that.
Hey, fine with me. I'm not a procurement expert, but I am a policy one, thank you.
Members of council, any, any other questions, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congrat, um, at this point, uh, I'll start with Council comments, and Mr. Whitmore, I'll let you start it off.
You call me? You call me? Okay, thank you. I have just only two things I would like to, uh, say. My fire chief is not here today, but, uh, on Saturday, I wasn't home, but one of my other neighbors gave me a call, uh, because the fire truck was blocking my driveway and they thought that they were near looking at me. But, uh, it was my neighbor. And, um, I tell you, the comments from the daughter of the mother that is now hospitalized with a TIA and going through other type of tests to, uh, see what's going on, she verbalized her appreciation for the fire, uh, department that showed up. And she had another quote, which another one of my friends that received service from fire stated a couple of weeks ago, that was, "We have a young fire department, highly trained." And that's what stuck out in my mind when she shared that. So I just wanted to send my kudos out to the fire department, um, the chief and, uh, all of his staff, and if you can please pass that on to them. And the other is, uh, we, I, I, I enjoyed going to the ribbon cutting on this past Friday for Kiss My Grits.
Yes.
And I can tell you, uh, my prediction is that this establishment is going to do a great job. Uh, I got a, saw something on social media today where, uh, someone was there this morning and really enjoyed it. And for those that are watching, I know there's been a lot of questions, what's happening? That's the old Studio Cigar Lounge with the restaurant attached to it. Well, the restaurant is open now, but he's also taken over the bottom floor of Studio Cigar Lounge for dining, as well as the top floor for dining, as well as smoking cigars. So the whole building is a beautiful building, so it's not going to go empty where we have to worry about any type of ordinances. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Davis?
Uh, yes, Mr. Whitmore just took my comments and elevated it, but I was there too at the grand opening of Kiss My Grits, and it was amazing. I think it was one of the better ribbon cuttings that, that I've been able to attend. And additionally, I'm just so impressed with Economic Development Department and everything because I have lost count of the new businesses that we've done ribbon cutting on. And, um, I just, I'm just impressed with what we're doing and the businesses that we are bringing in to the city. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Hudson.
Yes, in Fairburn, the city council's role is simple, but powerful, to be the voice of people, to protect transparency and to ensure decisions serve the best interest of our community. That work isn't always neat or easy. Conflict doesn't always look the way we want it to, but often it's necessary friction that uncovers the truth. I'm committed to serving with honesty and courage, even when conversations are uncomfortable and the road forward is challenging. My focus is on getting to the root of the issues, not just managing experiences. That means asking hard questions, demanding real answers and holding leadership accountable. The truth is, never a threat, it's the foundation for a stronger, more united Fairburn. We must be proactive. We cannot afford to silence those who speak up or advocate for transparency. When voices are silent, corruption lives in the shadows. But when voices are heard, even those that challenge us, we can face problems head-on and rebuild trust between the people and their government. I also want to pause to thank, um, Danielle Mayweather, Chanel Kelly, and as well as Audrey Horn, over the last two Saturdays, stood in the gap and supported a back-to-school giveaway of backpacks in my absence because duty calls for me as well. I wanted you to know your generosity and your presence and your heart for our children will never be under shadow. And on a personal note, I am proud to share that I have completed my public administration degree, my doctoral degree with Walden Uni-
degree, my doctoral degree with Walden University. This underscores the deep passion that I am gonna move forward in serving this community with.
Congratulations.
Mr. Smallwood?
All right, I always just like to take a moment to thank the staff. Our work session presenters noted how amazing they are, and I always like to just give kudos to our staff. Thanks, Chief, because I know we get alerts on different things that happen throughout the city, but then not long from there, we have expeditious conclusions to those things. So thank you and your department for what you're doing, as well as, I just wanna thank Ms. Chris. I actually work my day job with a citizen of Fairburn, and he told me something that was going on at his house, and I got on the phone, something with a water situation not tasting right, you know, as an elderly citizen, but our city took care of it very, very expeditiously. So I'd just like to highlight and thank you all for what you all do. And thank you, Ms. Brookins, for the work that you do, because yes, it is true, if we handle these things on the front end, we won't have to come back and revisit some of those issues. So thank you for all the hard work you do.
All right, Mr. Heath?
Yes, I, I would like to really say that, starting off, that our staff is a tremendous force in the city of Fairburn, and they do a jam-up job for all the citizens of Fairburn. I would assure you of that. I have been on the council, this is my 16th year, and it's just phenomenal at the things that are actually done that the average citizen don't recognize, but they may see them out like working on the power lines, is what they're doing right now on 29th Highway and stuff, because we've had outages. Rivertown Road is another one of those things that our staff has worked on, and we're finally gonna place underground cables to avoid in the future, power outages on Rivertown Road. So just, it's just phenomenal at what they do. We, as council people, we, we give them direction and the things that we feel like at youth citizens are really wanting to have done, and I just wanna say that I've lived here all my life, I'm 75 years old, and I have seen a lot of changes in the city of Fairburn. When I started policing here in 1971, the population was 1,850. Now is currently over 18,000. So I'm just saying that the phenomenal changes that has taken place in my lifetime is staggering, really, when I sit back and I see the great work that these people have done. Thank y'all.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, I just wanna take a moment to thank all of the department heads, and Ms. Chris, and Mr. Phillips, for the outstanding work that you did for our budget hearings. The presentations were outstanding. I really appreciated the summarization that you provided, but I more appreciated the accomplishments for this past year and the plan goes for the incoming fiscal year. That was very, very important information, and it really articulated how we are planning to spend the budget dollars, the taxpayers' dollars, to incorporate those plans. So thank you, thank you so much. And I wanna do really a special shout-out, though, to our Human Resource Director, Ms. Champagne, to say that in the two and a half years that you've been here, you really have elevated employee relations. And as Councilwoman Davis stated on Thursday night at our budget hearing, we started this administration in a major employee deficit, both in numbers and morale. So thank you so much for all the work that you've done, and a special, special shout-out to Ms. Crystal Starr for the accomplishment that she made, that she made. It is that kind of commitment that exemplifies the educational and employee development that we, as this body, totally endorse and put our money behind, because it helps us all. So thank you.
And let me just, let me just thank Melanie Docket, eighth grade at Landmark Christian Academy, that just signed with Nike NIL, just fastest.
Wow.
Good.
Fastest young lady in the state, I mean, she's lightning fast, and she cried a lake at the affair that we had, that Landmark had right downtown. This past Saturday was just totally, also of course, it's our recreation director who's into track and field, and so again, that was just a blessing for this young lady, be able to represent this, this city, but most of all, Landmark Christian Academy. Also wanna thank our fire department, I had a rescue of two seniors out of elevator, I believe it was today, yesterday, Sunday, excuse me, and so we're just very glad, I think it scared the crap out of them. And so wanna also thank our, wanna, wanna thank, for, again, Ms. Jones mentioned, our great, awesome budget presentation by our department, it's, again, just phenomenal information. Again, I wanna thank members of council also for the addressing, the, again, I mentioned this during the budget, I wanna thank our finance department, our city administrator and deputy city administrator for the foresight to see what, and again, I can't remember, is the House, was it 541, 91?
581.
581, in this case, that's happened, an impact, unfortunately, negative impact for most cities, not most, all 500-plus cities in all 159 counties. The city of Fairburn was one of the few governments, in this case, our legislative body actually forced, was had the foresight to plan for a rainy day, and so we're not being hit right now, as other mayors are literally in a panic, because they hadn't figured out how they're going to address the impact of this building. I think Mr. Whitmore mentioned it during the, during the budget hearing, we don't know what it's gonna do. So again, I wanna thank the staff and the members of this council for that. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Members of council, we have an executive session for litigation and personnel matter. Can I entertain a motion to go?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Second.